Welcome, everyone, to our, this is our town meeting before our council meeting, obviously. So I'll call this meeting to order and we need to elect a moderator, nominations from the floor, please. Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations. And all those in favor? They opposed, alright, so move, so the nominations are closed. Eligibility to vote, any person who is an elector of such town and any citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more, who jointly or separately who is liable to the town for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grand list of such town. Reference Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-6. So that's, you can vote at the town meeting if you meet those requirements and the legal notice.
A special meeting of electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meeting to the town of Berlin will be held at the Berlin Town Hall. Council chambers, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut, on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, at 6:45 PM for the following purposes. One, to approve a fiscal year 2025 non-budgeted appropriation of general fund unassigned fund balance in the amount of $1,331,320 capitalized items pending Board of Finance approval. Item number two, to approve a fiscal year 2025 non-budgeted appropriation of $264,212.46 of FEMA storm reimbursement funds, the development of an alternate fuel site at the Timberland Golf Course and to fund costs town of Berlin incurred during the extinguishing the fire on Lamentation Mountain pending the Board of Finance approval, in Berlin, Connecticut, this 20th day of December, 2024.
Thank you, Kate. So now we have a resolution before the town meeting? Okay, second on that? Alright, so now our discussion of the resolution. So, we've got, right, we've got the list of items, the 1.3. So, I'm proposing that we don't vote for this whole amount. There are some specific things that I think we need to do and there's some other funding that we may be able try to get from the state, in particular. And I'll just go through the items, probably just run through them really quickly, so the Sage Park parking lot, $400,000. In discussions with Donna, I have seen our state rep. And the sidewalks at McGee for $150, we're thinking, try and get a grant for those. Because now is the time to put it in, right? So, that, I'm not going to spend town money if we could spend state money, of course, right? All our money, all comes from the same pocketbooks, but, but better, better off our dime than, you know, our account. So, those two I would take out of there. And I also understand, Ashley, I think, the fire suppression units for the 166,000. Talking to Steve Wasnia before the meeting today, we're down to much, much, much less than that. I could let Ashley talk about that in a moment. I have a question on the school vans, if you guys remember, last year they wanted four vans. We were gonna buy two, they were gonna buy two. We bought two, what happened to the other two? That's my question. Did they spend it? Did they buy the other two? I, I don't know, they have, I believe they still have a half a million dollar surplus. So I have questions on what happened to the other two vans that they were supposed to purchase out of their funding. So, until we get the answer to that, if we do, I don't know what happened to those other two. The community center air quality, I would refer that to public building because they need to look at this before we vote on anything. Remember, those are the new rules we've come up with. Animal control van could wait. I would approve the truck for facilities, the rotary mower and the sand trap engineering. Those I would definitely approve along with the fire suppression units at the high school, which is going to be different than that. It's a little bit different plan now, which should be, I think, an estimate of about 30 grand. So those I would put in. I'd put the facilities, rotary mower, timberland sand trap and the fire suppression. I would hold off the sidewalks in Sage Park, we'll, we'll look to get some state funding. Community center air quality, off the public building. And no on the animal control van for now. So I don't know what those all add up to, what do they add up to, about 300 grand, maybe, something like that? How do we, I mean, that's just my thoughts, but, so it's all out there so we can discuss it. What do you all think about this? Right, so it's for us to discuss, or towns, townspeople can speak of it, whoever wants to. What are we thinking? Make sense? Yes? Yes, yeah. Okay, good, Sandy? Pete, what do you think? Yes? Yes, yeah, we can do that too, before we take a vote, of course. Ashley?
You want me to discuss the fire suppression in the vans?
Yes, yes, please. Steve said you had information for us.
Yeah, so the fire suppression system, I met with Steve and Craig, he's our IT director at the high school today to discuss what our options would be for fire suppression. So the existing fire suppression we have is up to code and what needs to be in there as far as overall fire safety. And what it is, is a water suppression system. So the concern from the Board of Ed is water and technology, obviously, it, it doesn't mesh. You, you, if you get a bunch of water on the equipment, the equipment is destroyed. The main equipment rooms over at the high school basically service the entire district. So it's, it's not just internet and, and things like that, it's also security communications, our phone systems, the weather station that we have over at BHS, which, from what I understand, the fire department also relies on when they're tracking weather patterns. So, to have one of these rooms go down, it would be catastrophic. So, a solution that we came up with today was rather than installing a water suppression system, a non-water suppression system in these, in these closets, a more feasible, more economical approach to this would be to put in systems that would have an early warning or a fire detection. Because right now, these rooms also do not have essentially smoke alarms in them. So if we were to install smoke alarms and smokeheads in these systems, which would tie into our existing fire system, the alarm would go all over to the fire department, they would get into these rooms before we would have any kind of major damage to the equipment. The idea is with early detection, is to get somebody in there, address the problem before an actual fire breaks out and destroys all of the equipment. Another solution that we would do, that would, that this type of project would also encompass is getting shields over the equipment. We have it in, I believe, the police station somebody had mentioned, and I believe we have it also in the server room over at the Board of Ed, which would somewhat, it would be installed over some of the main network racks. And then, so when, if there is a need for the sprinkler system to engage, it wouldn't be directly impacted by the water, so it would be kind of, the water would go to some of the more consumable areas, but the main equipment would be protected because it wouldn't be a direct hit on the water. So, or on the equipment, rather. So, the idea is with early detection and these shields, we could reduce the cost of having, of what we requested on this capital plan and then also have that extra layer of insurance that we need if, if there were to be a catastrophic event in one of these network closets. Just to give you kind of like a timeline, if something catastrophic were to happen into one of these, this, the district would be out for anywhere between two weeks up to four weeks, which, as you know, could be very, very detrimental to the educational system. And you probably have people screaming at your door, why, why, how did this happen? So, what we would like to do is revise that request from 150,000 or 165,000, I believe it is. We want to still be able to push this through and we're thinking, we reached out to a couple of our fire contractors. We have not yet gotten prices because this is all as early as 11 o'clock in the morning. But we would like to reserve about 50,000 for early detection and shielding and smoke sealing and anything else that may be incorporated in this project and return the rest of the funding to the fund balance.
But, yeah, that, that all makes sense, certainly we don't want that happening. My question is, it's a new school, how come this wasn't done before, I guess? I mean, why, why, I mean, it's a new construction, relatively new, I mean, it's something that I would thought we would, yeah, that's, that's the question.
So it is my understanding that when the building was going through the process of the construction process, everything that was in these now, in network closets were built up to code. So, which would be that water suppression system. I, outside of why other decisions were made, I'm, I'm not sure, that may be a question for somebody who was, was part of that project.
Alright, I mean, I, we, no doubt, we, we don't want that going down, so there's no question about that. And, and definitely appreciate, you know, Steve and everyone who worked on lowering this price and coming up with a better plan. So we, we definitely appreciate that, so, yeah, huge savings, so that, that's great, so. I mean, I would add that into the other, the projects I mentioned, to the, the truck, the mower, timberland and this. And then, you were gonna mention the vans, Ashley?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not quite sure where the, we were gonna purchase two vans. I was unaware that we were going to purchase two vans and you were going, or the town council, the capital funds were going, I was unaware of that.
That was the deal last, the last budget year, that's what we said, we wanted four vans, two the town would buy and two the, the Board of Ed would buy. That was how we left it, so. You still have a surplus, yeah, you still have a surplus of half a million, right, with the Board of Ed, I think? Something like that.
Are you talking about the choice grants?
Yes.
Because the choice grant is not, it's not surplus funds, and what happens is with the choice grant, I have to keep, I've explained this many times throughout the budget process, I have to keep about a half a million dollars in my choice grant at all times to cover payroll. I have 23 positions, full-time to part-time positions, from custodians to teachers in the choice grant that I cannot fund their payroll for the first half of the year if I do not keep a $500,000 balance in that account.
Fair enough.
So, so I wouldn't call that a surplus by any means. If you're talking about the general ed board of ed, that surplus, that is used primarily to fund technology throughout the district.
I get that, but, so, we gotta remember when we make a, you know, a budget decision, the two vans just disappeared somehow out of the Board of Ed budget, which they agreed to do, that's, that was the agreement. And I checked with the Board of Finance today to make sure, it was two and two. That's how we would get the four, as far as we all remember.
So, so Mark, may I ask, who did you make that agreement with? Because that did not, that, the Board of Ed Julia, Board of Ed Brian?
I'll get, I'll get more specifics, but I, I ran it by a couple of members of the Board of Finance and they do remember that same discussion and that, we all kind of agreed to that.
Okay.
Where it would come from, you know, one of the budgets that would come from, yeah.
Sure, I'll, I'll follow up with Brian and Julia as well, but that was never brought to my desk and that is something, because I would procure the vans through my office and that was never brought to my desk. So I'll see what information I can find out and get back to you on that as well. But while we're on the topic of vans, we are in desperate need of vans, like, we have 35 vans on fleet right now. More than half of them have over 100,000 miles. They transport up to 96 students in district and out. We, we transport to 21 out placements from New Britain all the way to Milford. Our, our, our maintenance costs have increased significantly over the past three years. I had to take a van out of inventory of the last week of December. I just got notification from NBT that we have to take another van out of service by the end of this month for educate, for engine failure. So, what's happening is if we don't have a full van replacement cycle year after year after year, we get into this problem where our vans are just over 10 years, very high mileage, incredibly expensive to fix, and it's becoming a problem where it's impacting the van runs themselves. So, we try our best when we get any kind of money from the town council, we're very appreciative of that, to get as much, when we get the funding, to do the best for our dollar in the sense of we are buying used vans whenever possible. We, we do state contract, we work with multiple vendors out there. Some things that we also have to consider is, we can't just buy any type of vehicle when it comes to school vans. The DMV has to say that that vehicle is appropriate to transport school children. So some of the other problem that we're having is we don't have the, the amount of minivans that we would use or six passenger vans that we could use as a student transportation vehicle are limited. Inventory is just low, manufacturers aren't making them. We transitioned to a 10-passenger transit van, however, although the, the van itself says it could hold up to 10 passengers, when we have our pre-K program and our, our special education students who require harnesses and car seats, we can't actually get 10 passengers into that van. So we're trying to, to get a nice variety of vans on our fleet so we could accommodate all of our student needs. But, our vans are in disrepair and I've, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I'd be more than happy to take any one of you on a ride in one of these vans and show you what we're, what we're working with here.
Yeah, and we, and, and we do appreciate that and we've heard that and I, I understand. I mean, 100,000 miles on a van today, I mean, I run vans at where I work and I buy them and I run them and 100,000 miles on a van today is nothing, quite frankly, but we drive all over the state with our van. So, I mean, you know, that shouldn't be the determining factor, I understand that, I mean, I don't know how old they are, what year they are, but.
So, so Mark, it's not just 100,000, I've got 185,000, 176,000, 170, like, it's over 100,000.
Okay.
So, so that's what we're dealing with.
So what are you looking for here, two vans, is that what the 150,000 for two?
150,000, depending on the type of vehicle that we get, we could get anywhere from two to four vehicles with that. Depending on pricing, availability and what we would likely, what we would like to do this, with this 150,000 is to get minimally three vehicles out of this.
But, so, can we find out though, as well, what happened to the other two that the Board of Ed was, yes? Yeah, oh, yeah, go ahead, hold on, yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, right, so we think Mr. Kugno negotiated that, you know, back when we were talking about the budget.
Okay.
So, I mean, he was.
I'll follow up with Brian on that.
You'll find out.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
So, but, so, what do you think, three vans, you're talking 150?
I think 150, with 150,000, we could get at least three vehicles, that's, that is my hope, I, you can't, please don't hold me to that.
No, no, I know, I know, I get it.
My, my hope is to get at least three vehicles out of that.
Yeah, I get it. Alright, what, what do you folks think about that? What do you all think? Yes, no? What do we think? Do the vans? Yeah, okay. So the two more, what I would say, Ashley, I mean, find out and we'll, we can go back specifically to the Board of Finance too and see what their memory is, you know, but I, I, I would say that for next year, you know, if we, if we did the three now, I get you need them and we, we don't, you know, we don't, we don't disagree with that, none of us here disagree with that. Right, from what I hear, we're all good with that. So, the next two, next year are on the Board of Ed. Because, you know, I mean, you know, that, that's the deal we made, that's the deal we made, so, what do you think about that? Get two more next, put two more in the budget next year, for you guys, out of your budget. That make sense?
Is the Board of Ed operating?
Whatever budget you got, I don't know, it's gonna come out of the Board of Ed budget, maybe Department 61, I don't, I don't know, we can figure that out. But that's really the town side, of course, so it should really be out of here. I mean, that's what, Mr. Kugno, that's, we've made that deal, that's why I couldn't, I, I mean, I, I'm not saying you don't need the other three, but I'm just saying that I never knew what happened to, I think we bought two, right? Didn't we give you two new ones this year, in the budget, in this budget year? I think we bought those two, if, I don't know, who would know about our fleet, Doug or Jimmy, I don't, do you know if we, did we buy two for them? Yeah, we gotta, we gotta, because I know we were talking about.
This year.
What's that?
I thought, I, it is my understanding we only purchased one van this, this year.
Alright.
Like, from 23 to 24.
We'll figure that out. Yeah, because I, I know we wanted to get you two, I, I, you wanted four and that, that's how we came up with the two and two. But we'll figure it out, we'll figure out what happened.
Yeah, and I'll see what I can find out from Brian and Julia as well.
Yeah, appreciate that.
It's, it's possible Jeff May had had a conversation with Brian and it just wasn't related to me.
Sure, no, I get it. Alright, so we'll, we'll throw the, the 150,000 in to the, to, to the ones that I mentioned. So now it would be, for purposes of discussion, obviously Sage Parking Lot, Sidewalks, McGee, for Donna to see if we can get anything, a grant from the state. So what I would add in here would be the, so we have the truck, right, the, the mower, the sand trap, the fire suppression and the van, so we're about 445 or so, 450, whatever. 445, right, yeah, alright, so that would be my proposal for these projects. And the community center would be sent to public building for their review and estimates on what needs to be done there. What are we thinking? So all good? We good with all that? Okay, so. Kate, what if we do now? That's the next question. I know, this is probably the easy part, what do we gotta do now?
Okay, so. How about move to approve a fiscal year 2025 non-budgeted appropriation of the general fund unassigned fund balance in the amount of $445,000 for capital items pending the Board of Finance approval?
Just what you said, we like that, we like that a lot.
I think if you would just move it and then Donna could second it, I think we're good.
No, just say so, so moved, move.
Thank you.
Second. Any, any more discussion on anything? And, and before we say yes, I know we're all gonna say yes, I hope, but the reason is to preserve our, because we've all heard it during our budget discussions and I'm sure we're gonna hear it again coming up in a month or two, to always preserve our fund balance, I've, it's been told to me, it's been told to the Board of Finance many times, so I'm preserving our fund balance. Because this year with the car tax situation, as Charlie mentioned, and as everything goes up, taxes, you know, our tax bills don't look too good for the following year, but we may need a little bit more in our fund balance to offset some of that, so that's my thinking in some of these. Certainly the important things, I think we, you know, as we vote on this tonight, we were approving, which is great. And the other things, we'll get, we will get them done, just not out of this particular appropriation, so. Okay, so all those in favor? Aye, opposed, alright, so.
Mayor, just so that you know, I think when it comes up in front of the council,
Yes.
it's at that point that we may want to refer the IAQ to the, of the.
Oh, sure, yeah, we can do it there, yeah, we'll do it there.
Just so that you have that on your.
Yeah, we'll do that, okay, thanks. So, the meeting is adjourned. Oh, what do I gotta do? Oh, but on the, we voted on the resolution, right?
Well, what about the FEMA?
Oh, yes, the second one, oh my goodness, yes, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at the clock, trying to, trying to get us out of here, but. Yes. So, yes, Charlie, what do you got? So, second that, and just, maybe Jim? So, just, just a couple, I mean, I, I think we're all good with this, obviously, but just tell us what it entails. I know you talked about the alternative, you know, fuel site before, which I think we, is a great idea, obviously, we know that.
So let's start off with a little history.
Sure.
The current town complex is in floodwater. And every so often it happens to flood, which brings in, we'll just say, three feet of water. And that's where the above-ground storage tanks are for both our diesel and our gasoline. We are switching primarily to more gasoline vehicles and getting away from the diesel vehicles for a number of reasons mechanically. None of those vehicles can go through three feet of water to fill up. So the thought was, is that we had some tanks came out of the Berlin High School. We could relocate those tanks and put, or relocate one tank, the gasoline tank, to the Timberland Golf Course. They go over their fuel site. And, in the event, not, not only in the event of emergency, but in event of routine, because we have to utilize that gas before it goes bad, we could use that as a secondary fuel site. And that would also stop some of the cars that are out there from having to travel all the way back to the complex and fuel up in the event that something, that we lost something down there, whether it through flooding or through electrical issues or whatever, we would have a backup fuel site for the gasoline. That would take care of a lot, that'll take care of most of our smaller vehicles, including police, administrative cars, facilities, vans, things like that, and would get us through a problem. So we had the tank, the plan was we were going to go with a vendor to come in and do the whole project. And that vendor became a problem with answering phone calls and coming out and checking on things. So we, we cleaned the tank out, had it all cleaned out last year and inspected inside. And then we went to a local vendor that is on the list of approved contractors for the town to do the site work. And then we contracted through who does our gas pump maintenance and installs and came up with a couple of prices. And those prices came back at, and let me just take a look. I got a lot of paperwork tonight. For the two vendors, it came back at a total of 105,843. We currently have just over 70,000 sitting in the bank. So, the flaw is, is we take that money, we, we put it in here to make the account fall, hopefully for the thing of our alternative fuel site. We then go out to bid, see if we can get these wages or these prices down so that we're not using the state wage counts, the state wage fees, which would drive the price up, maybe by doing some work ourselves out there with, with the town equipment or something else, but so we can get that price down so we can possibly get this done.
Yeah, that's great.
So that's the whole thing in a nutshell.
Yeah, appreciate it. And, and then, and that's gonna also fund some of your, some of the costs that the fire service with the lamentation. the costs that the fire service, with the lamentation, or is that just, just for the tanks?
That we'd have to talk to Kevin on. I don't know what he's trying to
Okay.
For the fire service.
Because he does, he does say that, right? What does he say to fund cost town of Berlin, current extinguishing the fire on Lamentation Mountain? Is he on there? Kevin?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Hey.
Good evening.
How are you?
Yeah, we've incurred about 190,000 in costs related to putting out the lamentation fire. Invoices are still coming in. It's, there's labor elements. There is also the cost that we incurred for Hunter's ambulance to be on site, as well as some other ancillary items that had to be purchased or to replace some of the existing either fire or town equipment that was used to help and was not returned in good working order. So the balance of the grant is proposed to be appropriated to cover for the cost for that emergency while we actively pursue reimbursement for all of the costs that the town incurred for the fire. So this is really appropriating to balance our books and have an appropriation against what has already been spent, again, with the intent of getting it back through FEMA, through the fire grant that the state has already been awarded.
Okay. Well, that's great. I'm sure we need much more than that probably, but, but we're still looking for some more reimbursement, right? From FEMA?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. What do you, what do we think? Good? Everybody good? All right. Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
That they're going to go to a follow base car system so that they'll mitigate back and what will be so that, so that the vehicles, not that there's a problem, but the vehicles, say, take a police car or take a mine car. I go out there and fuel up. And if I'm using that to fuel up out there, that station, none of that mileage is being put back into the maintenance software. We use the maintenance software, run the whole fleet, build up how much gas, how much mileage, and then we can do work for better maintenance.
Any other questions for Jim? I know he likes to stand up here and talk to us a lot, so. All right, so we're all set. We'll go ahead and take a motion on that.
I read the motion.
You read the motion already? Second it? Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Right, so moved. So now, right, Kate? Are we good now? We will, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. Sorry, ran over a little bit. Well, it's all right. We'll get, we'll get through. I would stick a couple minutes, right? What could go in?
So Sage Park parking and so that I can put it in separately.
Yeah, it's your state.
My state.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
My knife.
Melatonin acid, knife.
Okay.
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 Already. We've all read them ahead of time, mostly donations to different. Groups in town, police department. Park and rec, the other things. All right, so we'll go ahead and take a motion, Charlie.
Move to approve the consent agenda presented.
Thank you. Second on that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? So moved. All right, on to new business. So. Yaron Ryan. Hey, by the way, welcome. Welcome, our new town manager, Ryan is here. So trial by fire now should be easy tonight, pretty easy tonight, we hope. We always say that and it doesn't end up that way. No, it'll be fine.
So great. So it's great to be here, Mr. Mayor. And so to start, as you all know, we just had a special town meeting. So you did just go over those items already. I believe there's a new updated resolution. So I don't know if you want to go over those items again in more detail.
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I can just go over what we talked about for the sake of the the record here. So we ended up. Voting to approve. The, well, what we didn't approve, the Sage Park parking lot and the sidewalks at McGee. We're going to try and incorporate those into a grant that Representative Veach, Council, Councilor Veach as well. Many hats Donna wears. We'll try and work on a grant from the state for those. So and animal control, we turned down for the moment. And the community center, we need to make a motion to refer that to public building.
Do that after the first.
After the first motion. Okay, so. So this leaves us with the capital that we do want to approve from fund balance. So we have the. The fire suppression units, the vans, well, one hundred fifty thousand for the vans, fifty thousand for the fire suppression unit. The truck fifty five thousand, the mower one hundred sixty and the sand trap engineering for a grand total of two hundred forty five thousand. I'm sorry, four hundred forty five thousand. I was trying to cut some more out, see it didn't work. I'm just kidding, just kidding. So. That's, that's, yeah, so we take a motion on that.
Move to approve a fiscal year twenty twenty five non-budgeted appropriation of. Four hundred and forty five thousand dollars in the general fund unassigned fund balance for the installation of. A fire early warning system and shields at Berlin High School, fifty thousand dollars, new school vans, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. The purchase of a new truck for facilities, fifty five thousand dollars. The purchase of a new large rotary mower for grounds, one hundred sixty thousand dollars. And hiring and engineering for the proposed repair, renovation and sand traps at Timberland Golf Course, thirty thousand dollars. Pending the approval by the Board of Finance.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, no, that was fine. I was just making sure it was all.
Then we've had discussion at our meeting. Any other comments or thoughts?
Just one question. Donna, how you put in for these grants for Sage Park and McGee, what would be the timeline before we get an approval on that?
Really not until the fight, not until it comes out in May or June.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Budget, so it'll be, I'm going to put in through bonding and I'll work with Jack on it and.
Okay, I was just curious how long that would take.
We won't know before then. We might have an indication a little bit before the final, you know how that goes.
Oh, absolutely.
Feel until it happens.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed? So, so moved. Oh.
Motion to refer the IAQ. To public buildings. And I'll do that tomorrow.
Yes.
So moved.
Some of, some of.
What is an IAQ? I'm sorry.
IAQ, that's what they're having for the community center.
Yeah, that's the, the, right, the air system, I think, is what they're working on there, yeah. Public building. Yep, yep. So you seconded that? Okay, so any other comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? All right, so moved. And that takes care of that, right? We're good. Yes, on to. Number two.
This item was the other item that was talked about at the special meeting. So I don't know for the sake of the record if. For like to go into this, I know Jim Simon hasn't spoken about the need for alternative fuel source. At the Timberland Golf Course as well as the fire and limitation reimbursement that's. And this is a FEMA reimbursement.
Yes, yeah, we, thank you, Ryan. We heard that at our public hearing and. Obviously, we've been talking about the alternate fuel source. Which makes. A lot of sense based upon what happens sometimes at the town yard and as well as some reimbursement funds towards the fire and Lamination Mountain. So. Yeah, so we kind of heard all that. Any other, any comments or questions on that? So just go ahead and take a motion on that.
Move to approve a fiscal year twenty twenty five non-budgeted appropriation of FEMA storm reimbursement funds. The amount of forty thousand dollars to the alternative fuel site account and the capital non-recurring fund. For the installation of alternative fuel site, Timberland Golf Course. And two hundred twenty four thousand, two hundred twelve dollars and forty six cents to the disaster recovery initiatives account. Disaster recovery fund for the, for cost the town of Berlin incurred extinguishing the fire, Lamination Mountain. Pending the approval of Board of Finance.
Second on that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, so moved. Okay, on to three.
Right, so item three is a, an amendment to a contract which should sound familiar to you, FHI Studio. Is who worked to put our P O C D in. And so with the P O C D. There were some recommendations for some tax amendments with zoning that would help the town with economic development. And our Economic Development Director, Chris Edge, is on, I believe, to speak about that if you'd like. But we're seeking an amendment for that. So FHI. Oh, and Maureen as well. So I'll turn it over to Maureen.
Okay. Maureen?
Well, Chris was going to take it, but I will.
Chris, oh, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris, Maureen, whoever.
It's fine with never one of us. This is, as you know, economic, FHI has been working with us for a number of years. They worked on the Affordable Housing Plan, the Plan of Conservation and Development. They developed the Implementation Plan. And Economic Development has been working with them to propose commercial zoning. Amendments. And it's, we're at the point where we're exceeding the yearly amount for them. And we want to use money from the Conservation and Development Account in the Economic Developments Account to put it together. Contractual Services Account, rather, from Economic Development and put it together. For an additional amount up to five thousand dollars to continue to work with. FHI as they finish up these amendments for us on the commercial zones.
And if I could just add, Mayor and council members, a number of these zones have not been looked at in quite a while. We're looking at in particular Berlin Turnpike, both the Bridget One BT Two, but also SPDD, which is where the Golden Triangle is. So we really would like to be able to bring forward language and uses that more fit the Turnpike as well as our bank moving in the future. So that's really the main reasoning behind it. And FHI has done such a great job with the P O C D. We continued with them. And also knowing that they have a comfort level with the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is why I wanted to continue working with them to finish through the process.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
If I may.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
From being on the P O C D and continuing to work with them, working with FHI Studios, they have been great. They're really great to work with. They've been very helpful. They're informative. And we've been talking about in our follow-up meetings for P O C D, the text amendments and the different changes that are coming up. And I mean, this kind of follows what we're looking to do. So I just want to throw in that I would support doing this.
Excellent. Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions on this? We're good? Everybody's good? All right, Charles, take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter an amendment to the contract with FHI Studio in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars. To be paid from the Plan of Development Update Account and Economic Development Contractual Services Account. Assist with the preparation of economic development related zoning ordinance amendments. Recommended in the town's Plan of Conservation and Development, as this is in the best interest of the town, subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. Thanks, Chris. I'm sure you're still here, Chris, on something else.
Yes, sir.
He's here right now.
Yes, right now. He's up right now. Yes, I see that.
So the next item is another item that should look familiar to you all as we had previously authorized. I think it was the interim town manager to apply and enter into a brownfield loan agreement. And. This is in regards to the fifty five steel boulevard property. And so now that I'm here. This would be to authorize me to be able to sign those documents, to sign this, this loan that I believe Chris is here and he can speak to this. But I believe it is likely a forgivable loan, Chris?
Yes, it is. Yes. So we had worked with DECD on grants before. And essentially what I got from Jim Mahoney is Attorney General essentially had said because of statute, we can't get another grant. So instead of a grant, this is just going to be a forgivable loan. Essentially, it's basically the same thing, but different in name. And with the paperwork essentially going through to do this, to have our new town manager, Ryan Curly, to sign it. This essentially is monies to do the G O P ers as well as the cap over the site. So they can build, I think it's going to be fifty two apartment units on fifty five steel formerly eighty nine Farmington Avenue. So the good news is if you haven't driven by, they've started to put foundations in, so this is moving ahead. This just gives Ryan the ability to sign it on behalf of the Town of Berlin to make this happen.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Yeah, that's good. I know we've talked about this before, a couple of other meetings, so that's good. We can get that rolling. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, go ahead with a motion.
Move to approve the attached resolution to authorize Ryan Curly, Town Manager, to apply to the Connecticut DECD. For three hundred sixty thousand dollars additional municipal brownfields loan for fifty five steel boulevard. Formerly known as eight eighty nine Farmington Avenue. And if a loan is offered to accept a loan, execute a loan proposal. Loan agreement and other documents as necessary, secure and carry out the purposes of the loan, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council.
Thank you, second. Thank you, Donna. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
And a very happy new year to everyone.
Yes. Two. For five.
Right, number five. This is in regards to construction equipment rental and there's a need in the Public Works Department for. Equipment rental, particularly with heavy equipment. And so I believe they went out to bid looking for. And Mike is here to speak on that. We think there's six bidders, six bidders that Mike can speak to.
Yes. Hello, Mr. Mike. How we doing?
Good evening all. Yeah, we, we had this, this was a two-year contract we previously had in place. Worked out great, especially when we have these unanticipated like storms come in, trees down, or if we need help out in our road prep, with our road prep program. So we went back out to bid because the previous one just ended, got six contractors to give us unit prices for twelve categories of equipment and labor. Dozers, triaxles, regular dump trucks, you know, laborer, super, super tenants. What we'd like to do is what we did last time, which is use them on an à la carte basis, based on availability, really cost effectiveness and availability. So we're just going to go down the line. I went through the bid sheet and the unit, the lowest unit costs are sort of all over the place, but in some cases they're consistent. With some piece of equipment, we would never pay three hundred bucks for certain, you know, you know, those or whatever. So anyway. So we'd like to get your permission to do, get approval for this two-year contract.
Okay, appreciate that. Any questions for Mike? We're good?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, four bidders on this one.
Thank you.
Good. We're good? Everybody's good?
Yep.
Yep.
Sorry, six, you're right. Yeah, six.
Move to, move to authorize the town manager to accept the attached bid results for equipment rental contract. Number twenty twenty five dash oh six and utilize the services of earth contractors, McAllen Construction, W R R Incorporated. Garth Trucking, Latech and J and J Brothers when issuing further purchase orders to one or more of the firms. Depending on the vendor availability and cost effectiveness through December of twenty twenty six.
Thank you, second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. I'll take a vote on the motion. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody, no, everybody's here, so we're all aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
So we'll jump to item number six.
Number six.
And Mike is here again.
That's right.
It's scrap metal.
It likes to line them up.
Yeah, let's line them up.
In a similar situation, our scrap metal contract just ended. And the way it works is. They come to pick up the scrap metal that's put into our containers at the transfer station and they pay us, which is nice.
Oh, that's nice.
I think getting sometimes thirty thousand dollars a year from the scrap metal.
How refreshing. We can actually get paid. Yeah, wow, that's, that's.
Like to spend it?
That's something new. Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you. We appreciate it.
You should go up in our pricing.
Yeah, there you go.
So we get more money.
So it's a good deal for us. So encourage everyone you know to dump the scrap metal down to the transfer station.
Yeah, I gotta bring some down there myself. Yeah, yeah.
Bring it down, free charge.
We'll bring it down.
Yeah. So we, that's a bid. We have four bidders and the lowest, well, the way it works is they apply a percentage to the. It's like a number two bundle index at, from the Boston market for light iron. And Calamari Recycling was at a hundred forty percent, which is a good deal for us. They must like our steel. Oh, and scrap metal. So they were the highest bidder. So we want to go back with them. They were actually doing the last contract with us as well. And Jim and Lisa like them. So it works out great because they're billing the paperwork and they come when, you know, the container's full. So it's working out good. We'd like to get with them again. And, and that's for a three-year contract, which will be a nice, stable situation for us down there.
Yeah, that's great. Good. Any other questions for Jim? Mike, I'm sorry, not Jim. I'm looking at the thing here, Jane. Jane, Jane, I'm looking at Jane.
Jim is here.
I'm looking, I'm looking at Jim at the bottom of the page here. Yeah, where, where is Jim, by the way? Now, we're just, what's that?
He wrote it up.
He wrote, he wrote it up, okay. We're all good. All right, I'm going to take a motion.
Move to award contract twenty twenty five dash ten scrap metal disposal to Calamari Recycling Company Incorporated of Essex, Connecticut. For the period of February one, twenty twenty five through January thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Second? Thank you. Any other other comments or questions? Hearing none. Vote on the motion. All is in favor? Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Okay, number seven. Lucky number seven.
Seven, this should be an annual event for you. This should look familiar. This is an award for twenty twenty five gasoline contract. And I believe Jim Simons is here. I don't know if you'd like Jim to go into this, but this is bidding off of state contracts with. Frog. And it is for two thirty three, two point three three, one six per gallon gasoline for this coming calendar year.
Okay, anything to add, Mr. Simons? Yeah.
We have signed a contract.
Okay.
Let me just say that we are at two forty one eighty three. And that'll still give us a ninety two hundred dollar savings.
Oh, nice.
Seven thousand, seventy eight thousand five hundred gallons of gasoline.
Oh, okay, oh. Yeah, sign, sign. Yeah, sign quickly. Go sign real quick.
The new figure is going to, well, I can't tell you. The figure as of today was two dollars forty one eighty three.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if I can get them to hold that first thing in the morning, that'll be the figure. If not, I'll update you again. And that fluctuates because it comes off the top.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Okay, any questions for Jim? If not, go ahead and take a motion.
Move to award the twenty twenty five gasoline contract to East River Energy of Guilford, Connecticut. Utilizing Capital Region Council of Governments. Bid number seven seven one.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, so moved. All right, we're good. So we got. Yeah, number eight.
And Jim is here.
Oh, yes, you're still here. Yes, Jim, and you as well. Yes, you're still here, Jim? No, that's. What have we got? Ah, yes. Okay. Okay, that's good. Well, that's good. That's good.
Yeah. Fire, firefighters, physical, every year. Firefighters. Besides the basic physical that's here, they are also given. Chance or the ability to take the. Bone cancer test. That, that is an additional fee out to here, but it allows us to be, what the state requires to do for one of our cancer.
Okay, well, that's good. That's good. Any other questions for Jim? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town of Berlin's purchasing requirements to contract for medical services for the Town of Berlin Fire Department. With Hartford Healthcare Occupational Health in Plainville, Connecticut. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, second on that. All right, hearing no other comments or questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you, Jim. Okay.
If I may.
Yes.
Have the appointment.
Yes, we've seen this. Yes.
All right, so I did, this year we put together a spreadsheet for you.
That's great, yeah. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you. So we're trying to make it better, easier, whatever. This will change for the twenty first. But we will update you and of course I will send it to you by email. But we haven't heard from everybody. So we're tracking people down, so we're trying to make it a little smoother. And we'll also update on whoever has submitted an application. Or has decided not to be reappointed.
Okay. Yes, it looks like quite a voluminous list. But we'll study it and we'll figure it out by.
Every January.
Yes, indeed. We look, really look forward to it, yes.
If I can answer. And if you have any comments or improvements, it's the first time we've done it, so let me know. Yes.
Yeah.
There's, and I just, just trying to figure out what it, there's one on here that says citation hearing officer?
Yes.
What? What is that?
So. Well, number one, now that you said that. I don't think that comes in front of you. I think it's done by the town manager. And it has to do with, I believe, building. So.
I've been in front of him a lot of times.
Okay. Was it D'Amico?
Back then, it was Attorney Kearns.
Yeah, you know, so, yeah. It has to do with building and, right?
It was a zoning issue.
Yeah, okay, zoning. All right. So we'll take that one off because now that I think about it, I think it has to do with town, with the town manager. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Appreciate the spreadsheet.
It's a big help. Thank you.
Yeah, that is a big help. That'll, that'll help.
Look at it and if you, yeah, if you want something changed, we'll change it.
Yeah.
Always looking to improve.
Yeah, that's good. I think it's great. Okay, so we're off, so we are off to. Our town managers report, the first town managers report.
Right.
Yes.
We like really short ones.
Really sorry, I'm not there in person for your first one, but I have a cold and I don't want to give it to any of you.
Okay, Kate, thanks.
Oh, we appreciate that.
Yeah, you know, you're welcome. I'm a giver. What can I say?
Great, so I'll just start off with some good news for you all. I've been told that your laptops have been ordered.
Oh, whoa, whoa, that's great.
Hey.
Excellent.
Thumbs up for me, Ryan.
Christmas is a little late this year.
That's okay. We'll take it when we can get it, yeah.
Is that that little comment I had to you before Christmas, you were here in the audience? I'm just kidding.
Did you slip him a little something extra, Mark, too, maybe? Little welcoming gift or something?
That's unethical.
Okay, just, just making sure you read the ethics policy, that's all.
Absolutely. Kate's got my signed copy.
So that's good news for you. I did start last Thursday, so this is, as the mayor mentioned, my first council meeting. It's great to be with you all. And thank you for the warm welcome. I did have a first staff meeting today with top managers and department heads, which was very nice. We had that, what's the room called? The red, I'm still learning.
Community, was that the community center?
Oh, the community center.
It was in room.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever community center.
You had to walk across and brave the winds of the weather today?
The cold walk.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a cold walk. Thank God it's fairly close, yeah.
But everyone is working very, very well. And it was great to hear all the department heads and what they're working on, goals and whatnot. I'm meeting with everyone individually, trying to expedite that, get that moving along as quickly as I can. So I can get familiar, familiarized with the town. Get off to the races. We have budget season coming.
Coming at a heck of a time, Ryan, yes. Lucky you, yeah.
That's my report.
I would appreciate it. He's good. Yeah, he's good. We know we hired the right guy, yeah, very quick.
Time to shoot for eleven o'clock for the first one.
Okay, what do we got? Our special, no, special committee reports, right? I don't think we've had anything. I had, just got back from the holidays. And council communications, what do we have? Anything, folks?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, what do we got, Mark? We're good.
Just as a reminder, have we heard anything back from the Y? I know they're due next month. And I mean, it's just a short time away where they're supposed to give us. An update of whether they're going to be able to move forward with anything or.
Yes, I have, we have heard.
It's going to be.
We have heard from them. I spoke a couple of times. Well, I spoke to Don Rittman a couple of times, but I've also spoken to their. Potential future developer. So they're working on some things. They had a couple, they have a couple actually, and actually very good questions, which I'm working on with, with Maureen. Some zoning questions.
Okay.
Regarding that piece of property. So there's some things in the regs that are interesting and we, you know, we really never got that far. In our discussions of all the time we've taken, but there's some things that we're just looking at and then we'll get back to them and then he's gonna. The plan as a developer would, you know, give, give a plan to them. I mean, it's their, their guy and then, and then they'll ultimately come back to us, so.
I know we were, we were talking about a February timeline.
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, I would hope by the end of February, I, I hope we, we should have some, some more information. There, there's still, so the Y is still obviously waiting for the information from their developer so they can make their, you know, complete their due diligence and. See if that's all going to work. But yeah, they're working on it. They definitely are diligently working on it. And the town has given them all the public documents that we have.
I think we mentioned that before.
Yeah, so we gave them everything and then they're doing their own work. So, yeah, it is, it's, it's coming along.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else? Questions? Yes.
Berlin Land Trust is near and dear to me.
Yes.
And the president suggested that we contact the Attorney, Attorney General's office about the encroachment by the. Private company building a truck garage up there in a state park.
Yes.
How do we move forward with that?
What do we think, Jeff, on that? To.
I don't have any information about it, so if you want to send it to me, I'll.
I don't have any information about it. So if you want to send it to me, I'll look at it for you and give you an opinion.
Yeah, that's.
He was, that, that office was investigating it or looking into it. Wasn't that, what was?
It was said that it was looking into it, but attorney, the president of the land trust said that if we run, wrote a letter to the Attorney General's office, it might encourage them to move forward with it or move it along a little bit.
Yeah.
Speed it up.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, so that's.
Send me some information. I'm happy to.
That is, yeah, that's, so where would that information be? Maybe.
This firm that should at least give the information to Attorney Genofield to at least.
Yeah.
The letter.
Yeah.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got the dates and the maps and everything.
Yeah, he's got all the information. So we'll have Attorney Kearns get that to you, Jeff. Appreciate that.
Something else should be, my office, we have notes too. Okay, I have a folder. So let me know, Mark.
So we can have the town manager reach out to Dennis.
Okay.
And then turn, hand that over to the Attorney.
Yeah, that's good.
One other question I have is, do we know status of the generator for the senior center? Is that done? Are we still waiting for switches or?
That is a good.
Do we have any clue?
That was a good, yeah, that was, I thought we had like December. Remember, we got it to December? Doug, Doug has left, so.
Be a Christmas miracle.
With Mike or Doug?
Doug.
Doug, probably Doug, right? So could you check with Doug? So look and see what, what's going on with that. Yeah, because I think we got it to December, right? At December timeframe, whatever.
It was supposed to be in December from not.
Yes.
Remember.
Christmas miracle.
It was a Christmas miracle. Yeah, it'll, now it'll be a New Year's miracle. Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
With the wind. Losing power.
Yeah.
Global warming.
Yeah, would be good to get that done finally for the folks there, right? So, yeah, thanks, Sandy, for remembering that. And we can, Ryan can check on that and see where we're at. And you know what, Ryan, whatever you get, just, you just send us out a quick email to the council. Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, that's all. That should, that should be good. Yeah, appreciate it. Any, anything else? We good? All right, so we have our acceptance of minutes.
I move we accept the minute to the December 17th meeting.
Second on that. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we are now going to take a motion to that, we'll call it eight o'clock, move into executive session, take a motion in a second.
Move to, move into executive session, pending litigations, Connecticut General State Statute, Section 1-200, strategy and negotiations respective, pending claims or pending litigation for Deb Realty, 45 Chamberlain Highway Tax Appeal.
Thank you. Second on that. Oh, invited in, yeah, will be.
Attorney Denofen.
Town manager, yes.
Could, could I also suggest that, Mark, you just call me on your phone since we have so much trouble with the phones? So Mark can just call me.
Yes.
I can do that. No problem.
And we don't waste the time trying to figure it out and then we just do that anyway, you know?
Yes, let's do that. No, no.
I, he's trained.
He's trained, he's trained to use it. Next time, we'll, we'll give him a wave on this time. We'll do it next time, yeah.
All right.
Because things are going so well. We don't want to make a, we don't want to have anything wrong this time. So, okay, second? We have a second, right? All right, so. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, right, so moved. So, yeah, we're just going to give us a couple of minutes.